16 City Council Meeting to Order, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Here.
Inzkeep.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Soldner.
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given by Pastor Ken Berry from Trinity United Methodist Church.
Let us pray together. God of all life, thank you for the many blessings that surround us. Give us a sense of peace that comes from you in the midst of chaos and confusion. Today, oh Lord, may your presence lead and direct today's meeting. Give our leaders wisdom and guidance. May personal agendas be set aside, all voices be heard, and may we pull up our sleeves and work together for the good of all. For it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ken. Next item, please.
Item four, moral communications from the audience.
Now is the time of the meeting where we allow communication from the audience on items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to address the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three to five minutes.
How do you know who goes first?
Whoever stands up.
Can you come to the podium, please?
I own a business here in town called...
Dean, do you mind? Just so you can be broadcast for all the world to see.
My name is Dean Hackenberger, and I own a business here in Hutchinson named DH Home Improvement. I've been in business forty years. I started out in the siding business, nineteen seventy-six. I added replacement windows and insulation in the eighties. In the nineties, I added the roofing business. And in most of the years, I've taken on framing and kitchen and bathroom remodeling. So I do just a little bit of everything in remodeling a home. I recently attended the meeting that you sponsored with the Hutchinson Builders Association at the Atrium Hotel. And I want to read something that was part of the program. It has to do with the International Building Code. It says the 2012 International Building Code, IBC, and the 2012 International Residential Code, IRC, was when adopted by jurisdiction is a legal document that regulates the construction of structures and building. And what Ted tells me is directed toward new construction, building structures from the ground up. That's not my business. My business is remodeling, renovation, and bringing normal maintenance up to date. I do business on hail clings, wind and hail clings. I repair damage from tree damage. I just do re-roofing just because it needs it. I put siding because people want to do it. But in the progress of the meeting, I did not hear one word about remodeling, renovation, or maintenance, regular maintenance. It seems appears to me that when the city of Hutchinson adopted this code to be brought into the city of Hutchinson, they didn't take any account of the fact that the majority of the homes that I work on are from fifty to a hundred years old. And to me, it would be like asking, going into a car dealership with a nineteen thirty or forty or fifty-something automobile and asking the dealer to bring it up to 2012 standards of manufacturing. Because basically, I have been involved in new construction with gossips or pre-casts, where the last major construction I worked on was I was supervisor of the panels that went on the Central County Jail. And I worked with an architect there because the building had to conform to the architectural drawing. So I know a little bit about new construction. But basically, the business that I started was to fix houses up. I don't think after forty years in business, you're going to find anybody that's in business in town that has worked on more houses in the city of Hutchinson for upgrading the condition of the home. And my opinion is that when we find people... I was raised in the depression. I was born in nineteen thirty-four. My parents lost the home that I was raised or was born in. And they... My dad owned the lot next door and building a shop garage thing. And he built onto that and made that the house that I was raised in. And obviously, it would not have passed city code today. But I know all about substandard housing, because I lived there for fifteen years in a low standard. But the reason we have low standard housing is two reasons. Number one, there are some people that just don't care. It's a moral issue. They don't care. There are some people that just don't have the funds. Elderly people or disabled people or people on fixed income or low income don't have the money to do anything. But no matter how many laws or codes you pass, you're not going to change morals. You cannot legislate morals. And so what I'm thinking is that if we had a way that we could... And I might be repeating some things that have already been tried by the Housing Commission and Housing Authority or whatever you call it. And if I do, I apologize. But I'm thinking that what needs to be done is that we need to divide the city into districts. We do it zip code as our city divided. The areas that you folks are elected from is an area. The schools decide what district certain students go to because of where they live. The postal department has routes, the people that pick up our trash. They divide the city into routes. So there's not any reason why the city couldn't be divided into areas that have the greatest need and start with that. When you have a problem that's been created over years and years and years, you cannot solve it overnight. It takes time. And it takes... It's just like they say, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And that's what happens. Whenever you have a major problem, at least in my opinion, the simplest way to... After you've analyzed the problem, break it down into small components. And that's what we need to do by dividing the districts. And then put them in numbers. The most in need, do them first. Take three districts at a time if you want, and be analyzing one district before you go on to the next one. And so I'm thinking that the problem is one of a moral issue. And if we... Just like interfaith housing, I do a lot of work for them. And as you know, I do a lot of work with the City Development Block Grant. And I have done most of those projects here in Hutchinson. And I've been doing that project for fifteen years. And I have people come up to me with tears in their eyes after we finish the project telling me that I've changed their life. And now they have the incentive to do more to their house. And I go back later and drive by, and they have done more. And so it's a moral issue. It is not passing laws and codes and conforming. All you do is create resentment and loss of hope to people. They say, well, if I have to do all that, what's the use? I'm not even going to try. But I think we need to have more incentives for people to give them the... Some kind of hope that if... I don't know if it's low-income loans or the city block grant has done a great thing. But after I finish these block grants, I've never had anybody come to me and say, well, thank you for building my... Putting my house back in the code, you know, or for putting it so it can pass inspection. They just thank for what I did to make their house more livable and make them more proud of their house again. We seem to have lost some of the private ownership. But being raised in the depression and knowing what my folks went through during that time, these folks that are low income right now, they're going through their own depression on a personal level. I mean, the people... There are people in this town that are suffering as much from low income or a certain status than the people that suffered during the depression in the thirties. So I think we need to... What I'm asking for basically, the bottom line, now five minutes is probably up, is that we allow a little bit of tolerance and leeway to houses that have been built fifty to a hundred years ago when applying this code that was written for new construction. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hackenberger, we certainly appreciate the service you've provided to our community, especially along that Avenue A corridor with our CDBG grants. But I will mention that strict adherence to the international...
One other thing, Ken. Well, I'm probably wondering why I'm always the lowest bidder. I'll explain it to you real simple. Most of the contractors, when they get bids from their subcontractors, which has already put a profit in their bid, I don't think it's right for me to add another profit on top of the subcontractors for electrical or plumbing or heating and air on top of that. So my bid, when I turn it in, is exactly what the subcontractors have given to me. So I don't make any money off of the subcontractors. And I don't make a lot of money off the total project, to be honest with you. But I do it for the satisfaction.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And your bids have certainly enabled us to do more good work along that corridor. But I do believe that funds were contingent upon strict adherence to the International Property Maintenance Code. And I know that's frustrating because it cuts a lot of those houses out because there's too much work that can be done in that... In the amount of money we have the ability to allocate to each house. So I know that that is frustrating. You know, none of us were on the council when we originally adopted the 2006 International Property Maintenance Code, but I do remember it being quite controversial in this community. But looking at the deterioration of our housing stock precisely because we do have an older stock than all the surrounding communities, we needed to do something to raise that standard. And I apologize that you're finding it inhibiting in the good work that you do. But, you know, really for safety purposes... I don't have that code in front of me. It's quite lengthy. But a lot of it revolves around proper electrical work and HVAC and safety issues. I didn't know if the rest of the council had comments on that or... Well, we do appreciate your input. Are there others in the audience who'd like to address the council?
Not today.
Not... Okay, hearing none, please call the next item.
Item five, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six A, consider resolution of intent for fire station number five.
Good morning, Council. Frank Edwards, Director of Finance for the City. I have with me today Tyler Ellsworth, our bond advisor and legal counsel. We have for you today the resolution that will allow us to spend money on the construction and the design of the second fire station, which is located on 1024 Hendricks Avenue here in Hutch. So in order to start this project, a resolution that must be passed that authorizes the city to start spending money on the project. It's required by the Internal Revenue Service. And the attached resolution is that document that authorizes the process. So if the city council adopts this resolution, the city will be able to fund certain expenses prior to the issuance of bonds. And staff would recommend that we approve this resolution.
Frank, I'm surprised to see this item on the agenda, but I'm glad to see it on the agenda. I know this isn't a question for you, but do we have a time schedule as to when the bonds would be issued and so on on fire station number five? Is this a 2016 project?
It will end up being a 2016 project. We will probably issue bonds in the summer or maybe early fall for this project when a lot of the money is actually being spent. This resolution really gets us started with some design costs.
Sure, I understand that, yeah.
But we would issue bonds later this year.
And what it really does, it allows us to begin the design phase. But nothing will move forward until, you know, we bid the project. Those bids would come back to this council for approval whether we move forward or not. So really, we're just covering ourselves to be able to reimburse ourselves from bonds that we would issue, you know, this summer.
And we anticipate the cost of this project to be about 1.3 million dollars.
Yeah, that was my next question, is assuming you're comfortable with that number, that it would not exceed that authorization?
Yeah, based on the most recent fire station bid, I'm trying to remember what that number was, but it was one...
1.435.
Yeah, something. So, and design will be very, very, very similar, so...
I was going to say, I thought it was going to be identical.
Almost exact, probably.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are there comments or questions on this item? Or a motion on the resolution?
I've moved to approve the resolution of intent for fire station number five as presented by our finance director.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item six B, consider ordinance authorizing general obligation bonds for the Hutchinson Sports Arena project.
As you're aware, yesterday, we conducted a bond sale for the Sports Arena project. We actually had ten bidders on this project, which was the most that I have seen since I've been here. And of those bidders, we had a very favorable interest rate come in of 1.52 percent for the ten-year bonds. That actually is lower than our estimated interest rate when we started the project, which was 2.12 percent. Or it's about a 1.8 million dollar savings in interest for the project.
How much again, Frank? 1.8?
1.8 million.
And the interest rate was 1.52 percent. So with that and with the sale, the city council must authorize the issuance of the bonds through this attached ordinance. And our bond counsel and our legal counsel and our financial advisors have reviewed all the documents, and they are in compliance with all the statutes required. And we recommend that this ordinance be adopted. And again, Tyler Ellsworth is here if you have any questions related to this sale for me or him.
So we anticipate paying this project off earlier?
It all depends on the sales tax revenue coming in, too. We have some projection.
Naturally.
But it could allow that.
If one of the projections, assuming, as Frank mentioned, the sales tax revenues come in as projected, this could allow us to pay these bonds off in roughly eight and a half years versus ten. It's October of twenty-three. But again, that's contingent upon... And right now, you know, last three months, sales tax have not kept pace with last year. So really gives us a lot of cushion, if you will, so...
Yeah. That rate is almost unbelievable. Have you ever seen anything like that?
That's the lowest rate. I look back for ten years, this is the lowest rate I've seen.
I think it's history... I think our bond counsel or bond advisor said something back in nineteen eighty-seven, there might have been a rate comparable. So it's all about timing.
You planned it that way?
Well, I'd like to take credit for that.
But you planned it that way, Frank?
Frank, you better take credit while you can.
It's Frank's call, yeah, so...
Just how Frank drew it up.
Exactly right. But that, the ordinance in front of you is to authorize the issuance of the bonds.
And these are the remaining bonds, because we've also already authorized a partial, haven't we?
Yeah, I mean, 2.565 was done in the fourth quarter of 2015.
Yeah. You remember, what was the interest rate on that? Do you remember what we had on that?
Not off the top of my head. It was 1.9 percent.
Yeah, I was right at two. So, because at the time, we looked at issuing it all at once, thinking, well, let's just do a smaller one. And based on advice from our advisors, well, let's wait until after the first of the year, so...
Greg Berenberg, our financial advisor, did state that over the past thirty days, the rates had dropped thirty basis points. So that helped us.
Further questions?
I move that we approve the ordinance authorizing the general obligation bonds for the sports arena as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes, next item, please.
Frank.
Item six C, consider resolution authorizing general obligation bonds for the Hutchinson Sports Arena project.
This is something we're required to do now that we have adopted the ordinance. We have a resolution in front of you that prescribes the details and the form and the delivery of the principal amount of general obligation bonds. This document relates to the sale again, so it just prescribes exactly how they are to be delivered. This ordinance has been reviewed again with the... With our bond counsel and with our financial advisor, excuse me, the resolution has been reviewed. And staff recommends that we authorize this resolution as well.
Questions or a motion on this item?
I will move to approve the resolution as presented by staff.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven A, consider 2016 Historic Preservation Fund Grant Support Letter.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Janice McCarron, Director of Planning and Development. I don't have a presentation for this particular item because it's rather small, but did want to come before you to request support for submitting a 2016 Historic Preservation Grant to the state. You'll remember in January of this year, the council approved the Historic Preservation Action Plan. And among those action plan items were for the city to apply for historic preservation funding from the state for Houston-Whiteside residents primarily, but also could apply to other historic districts. And what the grant would entail would be funding for a cost estimator that would compare the cost of historic preservation versus traditional, you know, modern materials or even repair. So repair, replacements with my kind or modern materials, as well as paying for on-call services for a consultant to assist people who, you know, might have an older home and they just really don't even know where to begin. The grant deadline for the preliminary application is February fifteenth. And something new this year, they usually typically don't require this, but this year they're requiring a letter of support from the city council, governing body. And also, we're going to solicit a letter of support for the grant from the Landmarks Commission. It does require a forty percent local match, which a lot of that can be met through soft costs, staff time, photocopying, and those kind of costs. But we anticipate that we will need to have $5,000, basically cash funding, which we have budgeted for. The timeline is in the staff report, and the letter is as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Janice, have we been a recipient of this type of grant before?
We have.
So we have some experience here?
Yes, I didn't bring it, but I recently looked at the list, and I think we've gotten this funding probably at least twenty times in the past. We've been very successful getting... Competing for this grant funding from the state.
How long is this money good for? Until we spend it?
A year.
A year?
Just one year.
So one year from what, announcement of the grant?
Yeah, basically. So we expect they would be announcing in April. They usually give you till, until June or July to start, instead of the following year, June or July. So if we didn't use the consulting services... So there's two pieces. The cost estimator, you know, we know we can spend that, those funds. Consulting services is just kind of a guess on our part. If we didn't use those funds, we would return whatever portion we didn't use back to the state.
So has the city identified a partner yet or no on the consultant?
No, we have to receive the funds from them. And then we actually, the way we're writing the grant, is the state would be one of the people that reviewed the RFPs for...
Oh.
Oh, so you...
We think that that would be a good idea to have one member from the state Historic Preservation Office help us pick the consultant. They're very excited about this because they're hoping that they can use this in other cities because all cities are facing this similar, you know, similar things that we are with respect to historic preservation.
So when we get these appeals, which we've had several of them, where would this cost estimator have fit into that process or not fit into it?
Well, ideally, we would share with the applicant when they come in the office from the very beginning of their project, okay, well, here's the cost estimator. And so you see, if you... And I don't know in every case. In some cases, it might be a lot more expensive to repair or to, you know, to preserve. But it will help us to advise them. And hopefully... So I guess I'm not really answering your question. So if it is less costly, then hopefully, they would change their project and actually preserve, and there would be no appeal. That's the whole...
That's been the point, the case that they've made before us.
Right, right.
And we understand that.
That's the most common case you guys receive.
And it's difficult for us to argue.
Right. And if it is more costly, then they would go to the Historic, you know, the Landmarks Commission and come to you all and say economically, I can't afford it. But you guys don't really have a way... We, staff doesn't, neither do you, because we're not experts in construction and historic preservation. We don't have a way to assess whether it really is more or less costly. So we're hoping that this grant would help us to achieve that.
Do you think it might shore it up a little bit?
I think so.
Beyond the one year, in terms of the cost estimation and the architectural services, is the thought to apply for this again?
Well, I think the cost is...
Or would we take on the consultant or architectural services cost that this grant's going to cover?
I think the cost estimator would probably be good for a few years. I don't really see that we need to update it unless something really wild happened in the construction field, like the price of wood went way up or whatever. But, so that would only need to be updated every few years. But the consulting services, this will give us a real good feel for how much money we could put in the budget on an annual basis. I'm thinking that probably in the future, we would fund it through our planning department budget. And I don't anticipate it to be more than a couple thousand dollars a year, but I don't really know because we haven't had this before, so... It's a good test for us.
So you're looking at this being a one-year thing and not, most likely not applying again another year?
For the cost estimate, maybe in a few years from now. Or maybe the state would say, oh, you know, this was such a great idea, we'll fund it. I don't know.
Oh, wistful thinking.
Leave it on the budget.
So the announcement will be in April.
Yes.
And we could potentially have something in place by the end of the year.
And you all would have to accept the grant if we receive it. So we'll be coming back to you with the actual terms and conditions.
And what are the thoughts on how to publicize that to get that out to the folks? Because I don't see that that will help circumvent, or, excuse me, help alleviate those that try and circumvent the permit process. But if they knew that there was an alternative, then maybe they would inquire with you first, then...
Right. So we're hoping to do both a direct mail and also door-to-door. Our Landmarks Commissioners and the Friends of Historic... Not Friends of Historic Preservation, we're trying to get that group started. The Houston-Whiteside Historic District members have volunteered to do some door-to-door distribution for us. So between those two, I'm sure the newspaper will cover it for us as well, radio.
No pressure, Adam.
Yeah.
Cannot cover it. Yeah, so we're hoping to do a kind of, at least a two-pronged approach.
Good.
To let them know that this is available.
Well, I think, and I'm hopeful, that this is really an opportunity and a benefit to the homeowners. They get both potential architectural service support as well as a... What's the word I'm looking for? On the construction cost and someone who's not trying to sell them something, but rather someone that...
And unbiased.
Yeah, there you go, thank you.
Yeah.
And so I think it's a benefit and a great opportunity to the property owners through that process. And if it's something that we continue, then it stays there. And so it's a... And I think it's one of several very good benefits that are contained within the Historic Preservation Plan that you presented to us a while back. So I'm very pleased to see this.
Other questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move to approve the 2016 Historic Preservation Fund Grant Support Letter as presented.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes, thank you, Janice. Next item, please.
Item seven B, consider rural housing incentive district financing policy.
Okay, good morning again. Okay, good morning again. I'm seeing that the, I do have slides for this one, but it looks like they're not in the right order here, so. There we go. As you all remember, in November of last year, the City Council passed a resolution authorizing RHID financing within the city of Hutchinson. Included with that resolution was a housing needs analysis that staff prepared. Both the resolution, the housing needs analysis, and a publication we made in the newspaper were all forwarded to the Secretary of Commerce and we received approval for, for RHID financing from the state on January twentieth. The next step for RHID financing is to develop a policy. You'll, I'm, I'm not sure you all are aware, but we do have a policy for special assessments. So when a developer comes in and he wants to put in a new subdivision, the City Council's adopted a specific policy that says, okay, well, here are the requirements for when you want to use special assessments to finance your project. So this is a kind of a parallel thing for those developers who wish to use RHID financing. And I just want to hit on the highlights that staff is proposing. We have met multiple times with the City Manager's Office, Finance, Engineering, the Public Works Department to try to come up with what we felt was a reasonable policy for you and then I'm happy to answer questions. But basically what we're proposing is that based on recommendations of the Housing Commission, that there would be no limits on pricing residential units so that RHID financing would be available for any price of unit. And that would be only available for vacant residential properties. If there was already a property that had housing on it, would not be available. They would still have to apply for, go through the normal development review process, so if it requires plating or whatever, this wouldn't circumvent that. But the maximum duration for payback is fifteen years, which that's required under state statute. Properties that have RHID financing would not be eligible for the NRP. That would kind of be like a double, double entitlement. Would require submission of a petition, plan, and feasibility analysis, as well as itemization of infrastructure costs. Requires that the developer enter into a development agreement with the city and that private financing be done. And this is the one thing that we weren't sure how you would feel about, but staff's recommendation is that developers who are using RHID financing would finance the project themselves, would not get, get the special obligation bonding. And financial guarantees would be required. If there's any oversized infrastructure that the city requires, so for instance, if a development's going in and we ask them to oversize the pipe to accommodate an adjacent development, that the city would pay for the difference, the oversizing piece. And then the public hearing would be required by state statute and also other taxing entities would have a thirty-day protest period. That's required by state statute too. The only two taxing entities that have a say in it would be the county as well as the school district. So other, like the library and the Hutch wreck, they don't have a say in protesting. But if a specific RHID came forward, went through the whole process, you all approved it and either the school district or the county says no, that RHID cannot be created. And we have spoken with the school districts and the county made them aware of this tool and generally speaking, they're, they've been supportive. We would still have a little bit of work to do. If you guys approve this policy, we'd want to meet with the county and advise them of, you know, hopefully forthcoming developments. But as you remember, we actually had to with the resolution identify areas for development. So right now there's only five areas and these are the only five that someone could come in and apply for RHID financing on. And I have the steps outlined in your staff report. I won't go through those, but basically just want to say that even by approving this policy, you still haven't approved a single RHID. They still have to come through with their proposal, with their plan, with their pricing, and then we bring each one of those through a public hearing process to you all to approve. And so if you were to see one where you're like, wow, gee, I don't know, it looks like they don't really pay out this one, or you think that their projections are overly aggressive and you don't think the market's going to really do that, you have full rights to deny it. So this policy doesn't really obligate you to anything at this point. Just says, here's our policy. We did send the policy to the two developers that we are aware of who are wanting to use RHID financing right away and they didn't have any concerns or comments on it. The one thing, I didn't point out in my staff report, but I had a question about from one of the developers was, will we be able to do our own bidding? And the way we've written it, they would. The city would just be involved in that as far as approving whatever contractor they selected and requiring insurance. So with that, I am happy to try to answer questions and if it gets too technical, I have all the other departments here to help.
Janice, could you back up to that previous slide there on developer financing? No bonding. I assume you're talking about a letter of credit?
Usually they submit a letter of credit. They could also, let me see here, I think it's twenty-five percent if they do cash.
Cash.
Yeah. So they could do a cashier's check for twenty-five percent of the infrastructure cost or usually what we get is a irrevocable letter of credit and that's thirty-five percent of infrastructure costs.
And with your conversations with developers and candidate developers, they didn't have any issues with this or?
No.
Do we see any overriding additional cost to the developer on this that would prohibit them?
I actually think it'd be less cost. The downside is they won't be able to bond, but the upside is that they get to bid themselves. So when you go through the city's bidding process, it adds time to your project and time is money. So I'm not sure. We haven't really, you know, vetted it out, but I, I believe and based on discussions with Finance Department, City Manager, we believe that this is probably a pretty good deal, but I guess the proof will be in the pudding.
What portion, I should know this, the oversized infrastructure to be paid by the city, what is that percentage or of the project cost?
It just depends on the project. So for example, on Oxford Point, there was a, there was some duct work. I'm not even using the right words, but there was some work that had to be done for storm drainage off project that benefited not only that project, but also other developments. And so what would happen is our engineering department would calculate, well, what percent of these costs benefit this project and what percent benefit the city at large? And so those costs would be allocated accordingly.
And like, like just a residential sewer is what's typical, eight inches. So if we, if we for whatever reason saw the need to twelve inches so that we could extend it on further for future development, the city would pay the difference between the eight inch and the twelve inch sewer line, just as another example, or water for the same reason.
Janice, might I ask a question about why we took off limits on pricing of residential units? I, I remember when this first came before us to apply to the state for RHIDs, it was because we recognized that we had unmet needs in housing in, in a certain price point, or that was one of the things that I thought came out of this. I went back to not this last housing assessment you did for the application, but the last comprehensive one we did in two thousand nine. And it said that there's an unmet market opportunity for, for sale housing price between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and twenty thousand. And I think the majority of homes built in the last few years have been three hundred plus. Is that safe to say?
Where they're having trouble building homes is in the market range that you, you mentioned and I think that's because of the specials. So where we'll probably see this financing be used is in the special assessments, but our housing needs analysis, the one that we just did concluded that there probably is need throughout the market. We just, we don't construct hardly any new homes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the feeling is if, if you open up anywhere in the market, we're probably going to see movement. So that was the reason why it wasn't, you know.
Limited. So you don't think it would be prudent to put a cap at two fifty or two seventy-five?
I think if you wanted to do that, you could do that individually with each development agreement that came through.
Okay. So we'll still have that opportunity?
Yeah. I just, I wouldn't want to put it right here because then we have to amend this if we get a proposal.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
More of a pain than just approving a development agreement.
That makes perfect sense.
And everything's treated on a case-by-case, so again, you get the chance to review each individual applicant. Okay.
And when you look at the, the areas that are in this policy, it's going to lend itself to the two fifty, three hundred max, I would think. So, and really, when you look at our housing issues, I, I mean, our study says, but, but I think our housing issue is in, from all the way up the top down to the bottom. So it's hard to pick a number. So I think we, and I think some of the other communities that have adopted this have, have had the, had no limits. So, but it's a legitimate, it's a good question and we debated that.
I think the other thought is that housing development is a good thing. So regardless of, of where it falls, price range, it's, it's a good thing.
I recognize that, but I also recognize that we have a lot of people moving out of this community to Mays because of that particular middle, that step-up price point, we don't have. We have intro housing and we have your last house. So I just hope that this facilitates in the right direction development of housing in, in that range that will keep people in town.
And this is also usable for multifamily, isn't it?
It is.
So, you know, you might get some duplexes and things like that that would be individually sold for the two, something that would cost more to actually construct.
One of our first developers is planning a three-phase project that would include multifamily.
Okay.
You'll be seeing that, I mean, he's met with us several times, so I expect we'll be seeing that in the next couple of months.
So you got something in the wings then, huh?
Nice.
Good.
There's definitely a need there as well, that space.
Excellent.
Townhouses, condos, whatever you want.
Are all of those areas already platted?
No, only the ones that kind of look like they have funky little streets and lots.
Oh, I see. So those other three aren't?
Yeah, the three that are just big green blobs aren't.
Are they already owned by a particular developer?
Yeah, they all are developable. They're zoned residential and they're owned by people. We, we sent out a letter to all the owners of properties that were zoned residential and vacant and looked like they were developable and asked them if they wanted to be included in this. And these are the five property owners we've received responses from.
I see.
So we tried to be like a little logical about it.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean all of them will develop, but if we should get another one come in, it's not one of these five, we would have to go through the whole, the process of adopting another resolution, sending it up to the state.
Okay.
So Janice, Frank guessed right on the, the interest rate for the sports arena. What's your guesstimate, professional guesstimate on number of new units the next two years?
Two years?
We won't hold you to it, but let me write this down.
I'm going to say twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five new units? That's, that's a, that's a great goal.
Yeah, it'd be a great goal, right?
Well, this is a useful tool.
You're tough, John. You're tough. All right, all right.
Further questions, comments, or a motion on this item?
I would go ahead and move to accept and approve, boy, there's a lot of work in here, and approve, return to staff. No. How about we accept as proposed by staff, the rural housing incentive district financing?
I'll second.
Mouthful.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Innskeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes. Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven C, consider grant approval for Avenue A Community Development Block Grant.
Good morning. Amy Dinker, Housing Program Coordinator. Here before you for the next round of CDBG Bid Awards. And as you might remember, in a previous bid award, we had to ask for approval for multiple bids for the single contractor. Again, we had one contractor, he was in the audience earlier, who was the lowest bidder on all four that we have before you. So if you have any other questions, I can go into depth why we need to get their approval, but.
I just had a question about some of his comments earlier. Are we running into multiple homes that won't fall under our grant specifications because there's too much to be fixed up? Under IPMC?
I mean, it's interesting. I think he's, when he was talking about that, he was referring to other projects, not necessarily CDBG because before it even reaches him, SCAD does most of the analysis and they only provide the projects that they can do, so.
I see.
Yeah.
And I'll add in an aside, I think he also, some of his concern was with the rental registration inspection process there in a conversation I had had previously as well.
Okay, well, that sheds a lot of light on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
So maybe this is just to, to grant the approval to have one, one contractor in this go around.
Right. And the grant program guidelines, when we originally were awarded the grant, and one rule was placed on that if one contractor was going to be awarded more than three bids at a single time, we had to get council approval first.
Okay, I, that all said, I will move to accept the recommendation of SCAD to approve multiple bid awards to one contractor.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Innskeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven B, consider bid tabulation and award for eleven-eleven East Avenue B.
All right. Before you, we have the bid tabulation award for eleven-eleven East Avenue B. As you can see, DH Home Improvement was the lowest bidder at twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. I do have a scope of work for you. They're going to repair some of the foundation, replace siding, gutters, and the porch, the driveway, doors and windows, and a few other things like electrical and HVAC. This is the house. Any other questions?
Is there a motion on this item?
I move we approve the recommendation of SCAD for eleven-eleven East Avenue B.
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
You're fine.
That's where you were.
You're fine.
Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Innskeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven E, consider bid tabulation and award for twelve-thirteen East Avenue A.
Oh, okay. Twelve-thirteen East Avenue A. Again, sorry, I forgot to mention on eleven-eleven, it is a rental owned by Interfaith Housing. This is also rental owned by Interfaith Housing. It's the one on the corner as you're turning off onto K sixty-one. They've been working on it for some time and they're still working, but hopefully we can use CDBG funding to help them with that. Again, DH Home Improvement was the lowest bidder at twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The scope of work for this project would include, would include replacing gutters, repair damaged flooring in the house, installing new windows, working on the electrical and repairing and replacing damaged duct work. And again, Interfaith Housing will also be doing more work on this house as well, so.
So Amy, am I correct in remembering that rentals require fifty percent match by the landlord?
We did get that amended to twenty-five percent and Interfaith Housing will be providing twenty-five percent for both of those. Yes.
Thank you.
And was it for homeowner, the matching, or is there any matching for the, there is none, is there for the owner occupied?
No, there isn't because they are approved if they need the income.
Income guidelines.
Yeah.
I answered my own question. I thought about it. I'm good, thank you.
Is there a motion on the twelve-thirteen East Avenue A property?
I move we accept the recommendation of SCAD for the property of twelve-thirteen East Avenue A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Innskeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven E, or I'm sorry, seven F, consider bid tabulation and award for three-eighteen East Avenue A.
Three-eighteen East Avenue A is owner occupied. Once again, DH Home Improvement was the lowest bidder at twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The scope of work for this included repairing foundation, replacing damaged siding, doors and windows, installing a new roof and gutters and repairing the front porch, I believe. And this is the house in question.
Any motion or questions on this?
Did you say rental or owner occupied?
Owner occupied.
A general question, Amy. Applies to all of them. As I remember, the, the average amount that could be spent per the, the. per the full grant award, or the CDBG funding award, was like twenty-three seven or twenty-three five, something like that?
Twenty-three thousand, yes.
Twenty-three thousand, okay.
And the twenty-seven five, I just actually learned this myself, includes not only the housing repair, but also lead safe work practices, which that's an additional funding source, so. I mean, that takes off about eighteen hundred of the twenty-seven five, so it gets closer to the twenty-three average. So we're not too far over that average, but we're still a little bit.
Okay.
The lead safe work practice, is that like lead remediation, or just?
It includes that, I'm not at all familiar with all that's included, but a lot of it has to do with lead's safe, making sure that the lead paint is properly abated, or other things that have to do with safe work practices.
Asbestos, any of that kind of stuff.
I'm sure, yeah.
Is that the only additional funding source that comes into play with these as far as decreasing the cost, not the cost, decreasing the amount that comes off the CDBG?
No, actually, SCAD, who also administers the weatherization for our region or area, they also use those funding to also kind of equal out the funding sources.
So things like insulation or whatever falls into the weatherization, okay.
Right, right, and that's only been used on some of the houses, not all of them.
Thank you. I move we accept the recommendation of SCAD for the award to three eighteen East Avenue A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyrosti Carvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven G, consider bid tabulation and award for twelve seventeen East Avenue A.
Twelve seventeen East Avenue A, I'm sorry, is also a homeowner occupied unit. DH Home was the lowest bidder at twenty-three five, so this one would be lower than the average when you take out the lead safe work practices. The scope of work for this would be repairing foundation, replacing damaged siding, doors and windows, and installing a new roof and gutters and repair porch, similar to the previous one. And this is the house in question.
Some new siding will approve the appearance, very nicely.
Paint would do.
Right.
Yes.
I'd just like to note that this house, along with twelve thirteen, is a series of houses in a row along the stretch right across the street from Interfaith Housing, that the grant has been able to do. So it's really going to give that kind of stretch of housing a pretty good facelift, so.
But this one is homeowner occupied?
It is homeowner occupied.
It appears the one just to the side of it has a maybe newer siding or something, I can definitely see the new poles, so I bet that area is starting to really shape up.
Yes.
Okay, I will move to accept the SCAD recommendation for the house at twelve seventeen East Avenue A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyrosti Carvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight A, report to city officials.
Nancy, let's begin with you.
I think one thing that's really big is the announcement by B and B Theaters that they are starting their renovation project in the theaters at the mall, and can't wait to see what they come up with.
Yeah, nice to see some movement in the mall area.
Definitely.
Steve, what do you have?
Nothing, thank you.
In a similar vein, the announcement that they're going to sign a contract with the NJCAA to extend the amount of time that the, we'll host the tournament here in Hutchinson is, I think, a real feather in our cap.
Positive news. John?
Nothing this morning.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted to thank Deirdre and Paul and Merrill for taking John and I up to Topeka to have some conversation with our legislators. And we did that for City County Government Day, that was sponsored by the Kansas League of Municipalities last week. Had a good conversation with Senator Bruce about our concerns over a few items, including the elimination of the bond and interest exemption on the tax lid. There's some conversation surrounding that, and I feel hopeful that those words and pleas were heard, so. John, what do you have?
Got several things here, but I'll be quick. First is on the ATV access issue. I did receive and meet yesterday with Mr. McDade, who provided kind of a written format of his proposal that is going to be centered more on the membership type arrangement. And my thought would be that, I haven't really had a chance to look through it, I haven't shared it with the mayor yet, but the mayor and I would then meet with the city of South Hutchinson's mayor and city manager just to determine if that's something that's even doable for them. Because there's no sense in going to the work and putting it all together if they're not, they're not interested, so. But, you know, based on what I looked at, it seems pretty good plan, a lot of obligations on the membership part, so it'll be interesting to see if that's possible, but so we'll set something up and I'll share with you that. The other thing, I wanted to see about a study session for the council, some dates. First of all, to review and refine our goals that we talked about during the council planning session back in December. We want to review with you kind of an analysis of the ice storm and, you know, what worked and what didn't work. And then want to review kind of the, review the water and sewer rate studies that have been recently conducted. So several items, and that could be an opportunity to, so dates that we're looking at, I'd throw out at you, February the eleventh, eighteenth, or twenty-fifth.
The eighteenth is the only one that works for me.
I'll second the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, it also worked for me.
Eighteenth looks the best.
Are we talking just half a day?
Just a couple hours in the morning.
Then I can do.
Yeah, I'm thinking eight, eight.
Okay, then I could make, I could make them work.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it wouldn't be longer than, we'll get about two hours out.
As long as I'm done by noon.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be done definitely, so I'm thinking a couple hours.
So could we look at the eighteenth, is that what we're looking at?
Could, that'd be a good kind of an off week, and I guess we have council, sixteenth, yeah.
Oh, we do?
February eighteenth. Does that work for everybody? Time? Let's say, some of us teach yoga class, so. Let's say eight-thirty. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's not me.
Are you sure you can make it, John, by eight-thirty after teaching yoga?
And then, is that, that good then, Mayor, everything looked good on that for the eighteenth?
That'll work.
And then, in the weekly report, I just sent you just an idea of what it cost us during the ice storm to kind of clean up, even with our limited role we played there, and just wanted that, you to be aware of that, and I'll provide that to the media here a little bit later, but really, and just to put it in perspective, I mean, we calculated our cost of labor, our guys would have been, you know, working and being paid, so it's not out of pocket, but it's a, it's a cost to clean that up, and that would simply just be the sites where we collected debris and then spent weeks hauling that out.
Tell me your number of one hundred and eighty thousand on equipment.
That's based on FEMA. Yeah, FEMA has a formula that they use back in the two oh eight or two oh seven ice storm, whenever that was, and remember, we were reimbursed by FEMA, and FEMA has a calculation for equipment that they pay.
That's our equipment, not rental.
No, it's our equipment, yeah.
It's our equipment, and there's a cost factor or.
Yeah, just the actual usage of that, the wear and tear on it.
I see.
They have a per hour, I think, is how they, yeah. Yeah, it's a big number, and you think, you know, back in the, in the, was it oh eight? I'm trying, I knew that number, that year, the last ice storm when FEMA, I mean, that was about a one point two million dollar number, so, pretty big. And then the, let's see, I had one other thing here. The sports arena, just wanted to update you a little bit, of course, you know, we approved the bond bids today. Bid package number one, which represents about sixty-five percent of the project, is going to be bid this Thursday in Kansas City. J. Dunn will be conducting that bid opening. And we'll then receive a bid summary spreadsheet that compares the actual bids to the, to the budget that was prepared on the bid package one. Those will then come to the city council for approval on February the sixteenth. And again, that represents sixty-five percent of the project, and then we'll be, March, we'll be looking at approving bid package number two. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at with that project. Obviously, bonds were good today. Hopefully, the bid opening goes well on Thursday, and we've got competitive bids for that process, so. And I think that's all I had, other than, we do have some visitors, and I always kind of wonder who's here, but I think, are you all with the Leadership Reno County Group, want to welcome you guys? Appreciate, yeah, yeah, okay, I thought maybe, maybe that might be where you're from. We, I think Jade and I are scheduled to visit with that group in February sometime, yeah, so.
We always walk in and try to pinpoint which agenda item each person is.
What are they here for?
Then when we can't figure it out, we figure out, someone must have told them they had to come.
Yeah, probably. And that's all I had, Mayor, other than the motion to recess into executive session.
Till?
And I'm going to read, you want me to read what we're going in for, just to cover it for the record? For the purpose of discussing employer-employing negotiations, confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of second parties, and consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship. So the only one we're not going to talk about that we're allowed to is land acquisitions. And we'll do that until, let's say, eleven o'clock, and no action will be taken after that.
Great, can I get a motion on that item?
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyrosti Carvallo?
Yes.